Long day today. This is the last session, TCT 2025, heart issues. I'm really thank you for Antonio Colombo here together and very distinguished panelists here. And of course, Dr. Dogubak will give us updated long-term data from the left main and multivascular PCI, insight from noble 10 years and FEM 3, 5 years, please.
Thank you. So I'm gonna briefly touch and current updated data from noble TCT, FEM 3 and ACC and this year. So and we have two different modality treatment left main and multivascular disease. And we know the cardiac surgeon like this diagram. The cardiac is a lima graft to absolutely prevent all event occurring the proximal segment. But the STAN does not protect it. And this is a prevention series of bypass surgery. And this is a key summary over the last 15 years. Left main disease, four large random trial was done in the syntax left main subset, pre-combat XL. And the primary endpoint was no difference and three RCT, noble including the MACE, including the repeat revascularization. And the three or five year is favorable for bypass surgery. Two was published in Lancet Journal. And this year, TCT presented 10-year outcome. And the multivascular disease, we have also four random trials, syntax trial, best trial, freedom in diabetic trial, FEM 3 with FFR. All trial, the favorable bypass surgery for multivascular disease. So and this is presented, the TCT rate breaking trial, 10-year noble outcome. Everybody know where the noble data. This is IPD meta-analysis mortality. Our team also involving this IPD meta-analysis is four random trials, syntax, pre-combat noble XL. Mortality was no difference at all. 10-year is available syntax and free combat, no difference at all in the mortality. And so noble was now reported 10-year mortality outcome. That was done is the European country Nordic, Baltic, British island. And overall, 1,200 patients is a randomization one-to-one ratio. And the follow-up 10-year nearly possible to the 90%, mortality outcome. And the baseline then look back the initial baseline age in the 66 and most of chronic coronary syndrome diabetic is 15%. The syntax score relatively low syntax score 23, 22. And the procedural outcome, this is the two stand was used, 30%, the first generation is 8%. And there was the noble rim was mainly used. And IV was used nearly 74% after PCI. And the bypass surgery and on form for 84% lima to the LAD mainly done most of a patient. And the primary endpoint is all cause of mortality up to 10-year and no difference in the noble trial. And the mortality time-dependent landmark analysis also no difference between two group. And the mortality in ACS and CCS, 80% CCS and no difference, but in the acute coronary syndrome population and PCI was better. I think that would be some chance effect. And according to the syntax scores stratification, overall finding was consistent, no difference mortality outcomes between two group. And the noble trial and although primary MACE event was favorable for bypass surgery, the reason why repeat revascularization was included. And the all cause mortality, no difference, PCI, bypass surgery and the syntax score, no association with the mortality in ACS is, I think, just some chance effect. This is the presented, not yet published. And the FEM 3 trial, five year, this is final five year. ACC this year reported rate breaking trial. And the FEM 3 trial, primary endpoint at one year including repeat revascularization was a bypass surgery was win over the PCI. But the this is a pre-specified key analysis death MI stroke, just based on heart endpoint. A three-year result was published circulation. And this is a five-year final outcome. Everybody know where FEM 3 study, FFR guided PCI versus bypass surgery. And the primary pre-specified endpoint just confined to the heart endpoint death stroke MI. And the patient flow chart, 1,500 was ignored at five-year approximately 95% was completed follow. And the baseline characteristic age is 65 and overall is concussion is predominant and diabetic is 28%, ACS was 40%. And the chronic occlusion CTO is 21, 23. Syntax score 26, most of patients low and intermediate region. And the procedural outcome is FFR was used the most of a patient is 20%, 24% FFR, 0.8. But the imaging use is quite low, it's just 12%. And the lima to LAD is 97% worse done. And the death stroke MI, heart endpoint at five-year. And PCI is numerically higher, but statistically no difference, hazard ratio is 1.16, P value was 0.27. And the landmark analysis is at one year of time point, no difference within one year and after one year. And this is a secondary endpoint, all cause of death, cardiac death is no difference. And the MI is PCI is spontaneous slightly higher, but there was a multiple secondary comparison. And the repeat revascularization was much higher, but heart endpoint was no difference between two group. And based on the syntax score, there are some conflicting findings. In the low syntax score is PCI better and intermediate is bypass surgery better. And the high syntax score is two treatments is comparable. But this is also the sub and sub analysis is vulnerable to the multiple testing bias. And the limitation, this is pre-specified analysis and five-year and only 12% of use the imaging-guided PCI. So and the clinical implication is FFR-guided PCI with regard to the heart endpoint is comparable to the bypass surgery. And I think a key summary in the complex PCI coronary diseases such like left main multivascular disease and the extended follow-up up to five and 10-year, no difference, PCI, bypass surgery with death MI stroke. And the last remaining clinical challenge, there is no random trial comparing PCI and bypass surgery anymore. And only one trial, our defined DM trial is an ongoing trial targeting the diabetic population. As I mentioned, and 1,500 patient is actively planned and now we are almost approach 100 patient. If any research interest in defined DM trial, contact me at any time, we can welcome the joining in our trial. Thank you for your attention.
So we asked the question at the end.
Okay.
Okay.
At the end.
At the end, yeah. So the next trial is very important. Is a solution bifurcation DCB native coronary arteries open hype is a solution de novo?
Yeah, so thank you. So DCB, I like to talk about DCB and native coronary disease presented in the DCT. So we started with the polonangioplasty. Several years later, so we did the polonangioplasty for guttmarkard infection, permit try to show that good job, but electrically coiling there into my plasia, negative remodeling. So we developed the BEMETAS STAN. But BEMETAS STAN recent rate is very high. So we developed the drug routing STAN and STAN thrombosis rate, it was a problem, but the STAN thrombosis rate is very low, contemporary DES. But the 25 years ago, Bruno Cello developed the Quotid Bolune using Parkrytuxel. So I think we, after the long journey, we finally return to the where is that. So anyway, Quotid Bolune status is that in ISR, initially the for the DS, Quotid Bolune is recommended for the treatment of ISR, one recommendation. But after the study, 2024 guideline, DS is first recommendation in the in DS research. So for the small vessel disease, the basket small vessel trial demonstrates that the DCB is comparable to the DS to treatment of small vessel disease. But in a native coronary disease, last year, very negative trial was published. So very negative impact of it providing us the very, it provided us the very negative impact of DCB, wreckage-free trial. This trial, the DCB was used, SWI, the DCB was made in China. So using Parkrytuxel and eluting the, the slow eluting the one month. And then comparator was the fire brother DES, the slowly moves eluting stand. Two-year outcome is a two-year, DS event rate is 3.4. The DCB event rate is 6.4. The non-inferiority was not met. What was not meet and rather the DCB worse than DS treatment. Even in, so the small vessel disease, no comparable outcome, but the non-small vessel disease, DS better than DCB. So in this year, the TCT covered by the AI and DCB. Many DCB presentations, many abstract of those. I think the several registry, randomized trial and registry is important. wreckage-free, three-year outcomes. The wreckage-free is randomized trial I already introduced. After predilatation, where pre-modification, the pre-legions randomly assigned to the one-to-one DS and DCB. So overall, 80% in order to the randomization arm, 20% the next registry. So three-year follow-up, cardiac death, no difference. Target vessel MI, no difference. But clinically, physiologically indicated target lesion evaluation significantly higher in DCB groups. So primary endpoint, the cardiac death, target vessel MI clinically, physiologically indicated, TLR significantly higher in DCB groups. So landmark analysis, the gap between the two devices across the up to two, two, three years, even though at three years, statistics is significant. So this conclusion is that the DCB is not inferior to the DS treatment. This trial will be followed up to the five years. So another very important trial is a solution. Actually, this is the most important trial presented in the DCT, solution to noble trial. So solution in the solution to noble trial. In Korea, in our hospitals, we most frequently use a sequent to pre the Quotid Bolune. They're using drug is the Parkrytuxel. But the solution is the slowly musel eluting, slowly musel eluting, the drug eluting balloon. So it elute the drugs up to three months, slowly eluting the slowly muss. And this is trial design, randomization before procedure. So solution, DEB strategy and DS strategy. And primary endpoint is non-inferiority of target vessel failure at one year. Another core primary endpoint is this trial will be followed up to five years. Key inclusion is like this, vessel size is between the 2 and 2, 2, 5 millimeter. And this is a guideline, solution, DEB strategy, one-to-one region, predilatation, solution, DEB, the up for the 30 seconds. And use of DS in case of regular stenosis or recoiling more than 30% diameter stenosis, type C or greater dissection if FFR is positive. This is a DS strategy. So sample size is one-year target vessel failure assumed 6%. Non-inferior margin is 50% overall target vessel failure. The power is 95%. Sample size around 30,000 patient. So this is a follow-up study flow, 12 months. The 1,600 patient followed in each arm. So this is baseline characteristics. Patient age is 67, 67, diabetic is 25%. Hybreeding risk is 18%. Acute coronary syndrome is 1/3. In addition, the LAD and LAD is most frequent legion. Prox LAD is 18%. The device size more than three is 2/3, 67, 63. Moderate classification is 24%. Energy balloon side, radial access is 93. Otavulation used 3.6. Inter coronary imaging is only used in 16%. Device size is 3.1. This is primary endpoint, DS arm event rate is 4.4. DCB arm, solution, DEB arms, 5.3. Non-inferior margin was 2.44. So offer competence interval is below the non-inferior margin. So P value is 0.02. This trial met that the primary hypothesis, solution, DEB is not inferior to the DS at one-year follow. So this is TVF, non-inferiority margin, P value is 1.02. This is the individual component of primary endpoint, cardiac death, MI, clinical-driven TVR. So this is a secondary endpoint, breathing was not different. But subgroup analysis show there are three definitive interaction, P value is positive sex. Male better in DS, hybrid risk, the better in DS. The severe moderate, any severe moderate classification, better in DS. So this is a limitation and summary. Solution to noble is a large investigative driven pragmatic strategy trial, randomized patient before region preparation, no acute to late safety concern. So solution, DEB strategy has a low rate of cardiac death, region thrombosis, target vessel MI similar to DS. 80% of patient with the solution, DEB, did not require a STAN. This result with the broader inclusion criteria applied to significant segment of PCI procedure including high-risk patient in complex region. Five-year follow-up was planned. So this is conclusion, at one year, PCI with the solution, DEB and provisional DS, 20% was not inferior to the systematic use of DS for primary endpoint of TVF. Another interesting registry is the SCAR registry. In the SCAR registry, they selected a patient, 3,000, 3,000 DCB, 3,000 patient, 2,000 DCB, 1,000 bio-adaptor, using propensity matching, they compared the two strategy. So one-year, a two-year follow-up, DCB strategy event rate is 9.7, bio-adaptor is 4.9. So bio-adaptor was associated with the low event rate, target segmented revascularization, target vessel MI, all cause mortality. Each component, bio-adaptor is better than DCB treatment. Subgroup analysis consistently show that the bio-adaptor better than DCB. Another interesting registry, the CHINJU registry, presented by the Dr. Antonio Colombo, the chairperson. They evaluated the magic touchy. I briefly skip the this introduction. The CHINJU registry ignored the complex region only. Age is 66, very long region, complex region. But I want to point out the result. So type B dissection is 41, A, B dissection is 41. Procedure MI is 9.6, beta outstanding is only 4.9. Acute gain is 0.9. This is, I think, problem, binary stenosis is 33%. So at one year, overall death 2.9, TLR, target lesion evaluation is 9.6. So a little bit the numerically higher than my expectation. So magic touchy, slowly musel eluting STAN associated with a little bit higher event rate at one-year follow. Another interesting registry data is Alliance registry from the Japan. So Alliance registry implanted Quotid Bolune under the imaging guidance, under the inter coronary imaging guidance. So they evaluated agent Parkrytuxel, Quotid Bolune and sequent to pre Parkrytuxel Quotid Bolune. So 12-year follow-up, the 1,600 patient been ages 70 years old, post-lit noble region, 97. So LAD and predilatation was done 99%. Imaging use almost 90%. Agent is most frequent DCB. So at one year, target lesion failure is 4.7, below the, below the pre-stabilization non-inferior margin. So P value is very significant. At one-year, TLF is 4.7, cardiac death is 1.7, MI is 0.4, clinical-driven TLR is 2.9. Subgroups, some subgroups have very high event rate, some subgroups very low event rate. Summary, the imaging-guided DCB treatment in the Alliance registry show that the very favorable one-year clinical outcomes. So anyway, in this year, many DCB registry and random trial presented in the TCT. So solution trial achieved a non-inferiority of DCB compared with the DS. But the other registry data doesn't show the favorable outcomes of DCB. So in Korea, nowadays, ongoing two trials, diverse trial. Diverse trial is a dedicated DCB trial for the large vessel, reference vessel diameter more than 30. The DCB hybrid risk trial is a dedicated trial for patient with the hybrid risk. Reference vessel is 3.3. So these are two ongoing trials, use the sequent to pre sequent to pre Parkrytuxel eluting STAN. So these two trials finally answer to our question, DCB is comparable to the DS. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Very, very heavy, a lot of material. We could fill a full day just to discuss these trials. Congratulations to be able to summarize all of them. So the next is IVL after victory in shortcut, comparing standard strategy, cutting balloon or high pressure, super-high pressure balloon versus IVL. Time to reconcile the enthusiasm. You here on Kim from Ulsan College of Medicine.
Thanks for the introduction. So we are now seeing more and more calcium in these days and calcified lesions and increased procedure complexity and worsened clinical outcomes. So effective calcium modification is essential. We have multiple tools. And intravascular lissotripsy uses vapor bubble expansion to generate sonic pressure waves. Balloon angioplasty can cause an eccentric expansion, dissection or recoil, and sometimes it is not enough. Then we move to atherectomy. However, the its performance is influenced by a guide wire bias. So IVL has changed the field and it offers a safe way to treat the cymbal classification. And it was approved by US FDA for the treatment of calcified lesions in 2021 based on the result of this single-arm disruption AD3 trial, which met the goal for safety and procedural success. Despite the higher cost, it became the go-to approach for treating heavily calcified lesions because of its easy of use. IVL usage rose from 0 to nearly 8% in just two years, while atherectomy use declined by almost 20%. However, IVL comes with a significant cost. And so the real question is, do all patients need IVL? Or can we achieve a similar result with lower-cost device? So if we use them properly and guide the therapy with intravascular imaging. The OPM balloon is a super-high pressure balloon capable of inflating well of certified atmosphere. And over time, small studies have shown that OPM performs well and importantly, it has proven to be safe. So the trial was to determine whether lesion preparation using OPM balloon is non-inferior to IVL. They enrolled acute or chronic coronary syndrome patient, all with functionally significant and heavily calcified, single denova lesions. Patients were randomized one-to-one to either device. And they recommended selecting an OPM balloon that was at least 0.5 millimeter smaller than vessel size. The study compared both strategies in terms of finer stent expansion. And the Victoria trial enrolled 282 patients. Their mean age was about 71. The procedural time showed a trend toward shorter with OPM NCB. The more IVL patients required a predilation with additional balloons. The results were similar as previously shown, meeting the criterion for non-inferiority. The safety outcomes and the procedural success and of course, Saturday clinical results were essentially identical. So when properly sized, a super-high pressure balloon achieved stent expansion equivalent to IVL. So what about the cutting balloon? The shortcut trial enrolled 413 patients who had moderate to severe classification. And patients were stratified by whether atherectomy was planned and they were randomized one-to-one to either device. A major strength of the trial was its strict requirement for IVS use before randomization and after the assigned device and after the stent implantation. In general, patients were in their early 70s and 75% were male. And the median occupied calcium was around 340 degrees. The primary endpoint was a post-procedural MSA. And the results were clear. The difference was 0.6 square millimeter, which met the non-inferiority. So in terms of safety outcomes and complication rates were fairly low and did not differ between the two groups. And the cost analysis showed a substantial difference. IVL was more expensive, which was mainly driven by almost entirely the device cost. So in lesions without planned atherectomy, the cutting balloon showed a slightly smaller MSA. But after adjusting for a smaller reference vessel size, the difference narrowed to 0.6, supporting the true non-inferiority. So both device were effective and safe and cutting balloon offers a lower cost first option. So we can start with balloons, like cutting balloons, then high-pressure NC balloons and resolve IVL for when the lesion truly demands it. And IVL still shines as a bailout while other approaches fail. So in summary, not every calcified lesions require a premium device. So a balloon-first strategy is both lesionable and effective and reduce unnecessary cost and still maintain its excellent procedural results and in patients we treat every day. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. I think the last presentation is about the partner tree. Climb the summit, the journey continues. Do Young Kang from ASAM will present these trials.
Thank you so much, Professor Colombo. This is the last talk of this day about the major heart valve disease in TCT 2025 update. I will talk about four trials. One is prev value, about the prevalence of the VHD. Another is partner three, low-risk trial, seven-year, very important result. And on the two trials about the new devices for the transcutomitral valve replacement. First is the prev value by David Cohen. They evaluate the patient without the information of the valve heart disease. They just gather the data from the work green or CVS and check the echo. And the prevalence of the more than moderate or more of valve heart disease was higher than the expected 8.2%. and very high 15% in older ages. And the aortic stenosis was increased with age. And metal regurgitation was quite stable among the age. And another is the Partner 3 Low Risk Trial 7-Year that was published in NEJM. They evaluated seven-year result that was randomized between tavo and surgery in low surgical risk population. Primary endpoint was the non-hierarchical composite of all-coz death stroke or rehospitalization. And secondary was the win ratio method. And the patient was followed in about 90% patient. And they gathered vital sign swap with the government data. And mortality follow-up was gathered in about 94% of the patient. And the baseline age was 73 and STS score was 1.9, very low. And the primary endpoint was still comparable between tavo and savo, still in seven-year follow-up. And the win ratio was also comparable between two groups. And all-coz deaths, CV and non-CV deaths, all-stroke, rehospitalization, and was all comparable between two groups still during the seven-years follow-up. And the clinical valve thrombosis was higher in tavo patient and new onset atrial fibrillation was lower in tavo patient. And valve hemodynamics at seven-year was still comparable between groups. This shows a small trend of the little bit larger valve area in tavo patient. And paraventric regurgitation or the mild regurgitation was a little bit more in tavo patient. But moderate or severe regurgitation was not different between groups. All-coz valve failure or aortic valve intervention was same between groups. So the others concluded that among patients with symptomatic cymbal aortic stenosis and low surgical risk treated with Sapien 3 or surgery over seven years of follow-up, both treatments were associated with a similar clinical event. And another two trial is about the transcutomitral valve replacement for the native mitral valve failure. First is the insert core trial that evaluated the function of the Sapien M3 system. It has two components. Sapien M3 dock that is anchored in the mitral valve with a transseptal approach and then implant the Sapien M3 valve, just like the mitral valve procedure. And this study evaluated the patient enrolled the patient with unstable for surgery or other commercially available transcutative treatment options. And then single-arm transseptal TMVR was done. And the primary endpoint is one-year composite of all-coz mortality and heart failure hospitalization. Because it was single-arm study, there was compared to prescribe performance score of 45% at one year. That means very high risk population. And 299 patients treated and 287 patients implanted the valve. And the mean age was 75 and STS score was 6.6. And the cause of the MR was primary in 35% and secondary in about 60%. And LV ejection fraction less than 40% was about 30% of the study population. And the device time was about 90 minutes. And there was no intra-procedural death or conversion to surgery. And no valve embolization and significant LV obstruction was occurred. And percutaneous P valve closure was done in 5% of the patient. And the primary endpoint of the all-coz death or heart failure hospitalization was in the 25% of the patient that was lower than the prescribed performance score at one year. And the all-coz death rate was 14% and heart failure hospitalization was about 17% at one year. And MR severity was well recovered after the procedure and maintained for one year. And the disabling stroke was occurred in 1.7% at 30-day and 3.9% at one year. That means the major adverse outcome. So the Insert Core Study was published in Lancet and it was the first pivotal trial of the fully percutaneous transseptal TMVR and showed the low 30-day and one-year mortality. The last trial is the Summit-McPivotal trial with a tendon transapical transcutator mitral valve replacement device. This tendon TMVR system from Abbott. It has the apical pad and then tether into the mitral valve. And the study is evaluating the tendon for mitral clip in randomized control trial. And this is another arm with a severe mitral annual calcification that treated with the tendon. And this is the example of the severe Mitral-Mc and then valve implantation. The patient with mitral regurgitation or severe MS was enrolled and totally 103 patients treated with the tendon system. And the mean age was 78. Atrial fibrillation was in 56% and diabetes was of 52%. And the MR was the major cause of the procedure and MS was in 12%. And procedure survivor was 98% and technical success was 94%. Valve was implanted in 100 of the patient. And primary study endpoint, the all-coz mortality or heart failure hospitalization was occurred in 40% and freedom from the event was 60% that the primary endpoint was met. And one-year mortality was 21% and the heart failure hospitalization was about 30%. And also the effect on MR degree and stenosis was very good. So they concluded that the Summit-McPivotal trial showed the acceptable clinical outcome in this very high-risk population. And this is the summary of the four trials. Prev value showed moderate or higher valve heart disease in 8.2% in elderly population on diagnosed valve heart disease. And Partner 3 showed a comparable tavo and savo outcome in seven-year. And Insert Core and Summit showed that the Sapien M3 and transseptal tendon device they showed the favorable one-year outcome. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we have some time for discussion. Maybe we just start in order. First, the left main, then the DCB. And so concerning the left main.
I have question to the Dougba. So actually, ASAM Medical Center had a lot of the left main data. So from the over 10 years, I have a question to the some determining factor for the long-term outcome. So for example, the short-term outcome, usually the mechanical problem, including optimization, may be the important sort of. What about the, what do you think the long-term outcome determinant in left main? PCI or CABG?
Yes, is the predictor of the all-coz mortality 10 years. So I think just not yet published that trial in any journal and just a short slide and the overall comparative long-term outcome is similar. But there are some arguable things. According to the syntax score, there was no difference at all. It's all-coz mortality same, low syntax, middle syntax, and high syntax score in the chronic coronary syndrome, ACS. Some different finding, I think, some, you know, chance effect. And in the subgroup analysis, they did not provide some limited, you know, resource. I didn't find any specific predictor for the long-term outcome. But the result is comparable in the all-coz mortality up to 10-year. Yeah.
Well, actually, multivascular disease study, you know, they definitely different. Motility difference, PCI versus bypass surgery. And so I think it famously five years clearly demonstrate kind of no mortality difference in terms of multivascular subset, right? Could you explain that for how, in the future perspective and from the FM3 studies? And so we want to PCI. I think it's very forced studies, you know, no actual mortality differences, so.
Yes, FM3 studies are also some, one of some state-of-the-art PCI using the FFR routine. But the imaging is just 12% used in the multivascular disease. But the hard endpoint, as we know, is death semi-strong, no difference, PCI versus bypass surgery. And the repeat vascularization always consistently higher. So I'm much emphasized in the hard clinical endpoint. You know, if suitable for PCI, either PCI or bypass surgery in the contemporary practice, we can do PCI much, much freely, even in multivascular disease.
You know, I am a little bit surprised about the performance of bypass. Because even bypass with a mummy is not able to lower the event rates significantly, no less MI, no less mortality. We always tell that if you bypass the LED, you overcome events in the proximal LED. But this is not true because even PCI. So I think should make us think that what we are doing is okay, but we have to come out with some other solutions. Because even bypass surgery is not able to make an impact.
So next year, TCT meeting, we have make some debate session, Antonio and David Taggart for PCI versus bypass surgery.
Okay, I think in the interest of time, let's go to the other dracoted balloons. I like to make a point. I think has not been stressed much. Comparing red cage and solution de novo. No, I think is different. If you compare DCB strategy versus DCB. Because I don't believe our goal is to show that DCB are better than stents. We have to show that if you have DCB in your CAT lab, you do better compared that if you don't have DCB. So DCB is an adjunct to stent. And 20%, the stents maybe in real life could be even 30%. But I think a strategy trial, to me, is more realistic than a pure 1:1 randomized of DCB versus stent. I don't know what you think.
All right. Even in the solution study, they mentioned about the angiographic kind of preparation for, you know, DCB arm, the meaning is. We have no, if we don't have a drugstore stent, biometal stent anyway, a lot of, you know, complication issues, unexpected calcified lesions, diffuse disease. And so preparing region first, that is the first step of, you know, dracoted balloon. That is my personal, you know, practical concern.
But if you are using, if you know that you have to use a dracoted balloon, are you preparing the lesion differently compared to standing or the same? Is the question mark, what do you think? You prepare the lesion the same or differently?
Of course, if we plan to use DCB, we will do the P dilatation better. For example, prolong NC ballooning so that the recoil is less. But for us, we don't have much doubt on DCB. We use a lot, especially in CTO, the outcome is very good. So the major concern for DCB use is imaging. You need to make sure it's true-toTrue wiring. If there are false lumen, you use DCB in false lumen, sometimes you form aneurysm and it did create a problem. Otherwise, overall the outcome result, we are very, very satisfied with that.
But to me, the main goal of DCB is to use, not to use a stent when you don't need it.
Yeah, yeah, yes, definitely.
To use less stents if you don't need it. When we did the syntax trial, we put seven, eight stents in patients. This is not contemporary anymore. If you have a good result, nice lumen, why you place a stent? You see that, even if the crossover is 50%, it's fine, you don't do stent in 50%.
Especially for very young patients. So we cannot so, I can say, so think about the future events. So that, of course, no stent is sometimes effective for young patient. But so the problem is DCB should use to, as Dr. Lamho said, so very good, appropriate lesion preparation using cutting balloon or scoring balloon or sometimes use rotaveration or sometimes DCA, such kind of preparation. And also the imaging can make the good outcome of the DCB? It's a problem.
But to me, the main, the most important message of the solution de novo and also the cage free is that event rates are not higher. People always tell, I need to place a stent because I want to go home to sleep. Even if you don't place a stent, you will be able to sleep because event rates were the same. And we are not talking about 100 patients, but 1,500 patients without any FFR, no IV, just angiography. So if you do DCB, you don't need to take a sleeping pill. You can sleep okay.
Right, very, I'm getting controversial. It's a way of thinking, Antonio. Anyway, avoid the stent.
Avoid the stent when you don't need it. Not, I don't like to go against the stent. I don't like, not to take a taxi if I can walk 100 meters.
But I would like to say, actually, more to her end.
I have a question, yeah.
Thanks very much. I'm Christina. I'm one of the fellows from Hong Kong. I have a question for Professor Clonbo and Dr. Ahn in terms of.
Close, microphone.
Oh, can you hear me? In terms of the choice of DCB, obviously, there's quite a few platforms available. And do we think that with the two different preparations of serolimus and Paclitaxel, is it a class effect of DCB for the efficacy? You know, should we be using, sticking to one DCB or should we stock multiple DCBs in our cath lab? Or should we be sort of tailoring which DCB we choose for the specific lesion and patient?
But I think not only Paclitaxel versus serolimus, we have to call now each DCB by the name. You know, the Ginge trial presented with was serolimus, but the late loss was 0.30, which is not minimal. If you look at the serolimus crystal that was tested in Malaysia in publishing JAK intervention, the late loss was 0.05. So more than 10 times less. So same serolimus, but different modality of coating. So I think we should not talk about Paclitaxel versus serolimus, but we should still call each balloon by the name. And then maybe later on, we can be more generic. But at this stage, we should call solution, magic touch. I know that journals don't like the names, but maybe we should call nanoparticle, microparticle, whatever. We have to be more specific.
Do you think there's a role of tailoring the DC, that specifics, say, solution, magic touch, agent, LUX to the lesion?
No, I don't think you should tailor. There is some concern, but not proven that if you have a real bad dissection, you may better use serolimus than Paclitaxel because there are some case reports. because there are some case report of aneurysm after pachytaxel. But not yet to make a clear recommendation. But if I have a real very big dissection and I don't implant the stent because the lumen is fine, but the dissection is really big, maybe I prefer serolimus. But I say maybe, I, just personal. Okay, I think we have to move to the lesion preparation, IVL versus old technology.
Any, any other? All right, any other? Okay.
Yeah, I agree. We get some promising alternative to IVL based on the results of Victory and Shortcut. But however, when we look into the MSA in the controlled arm in the shortcut trial, the MSA in the cutting balloon arm was more than eight square millimeter, 8.0 square millimeter. I think if we enrolled very severe classified lesions, we cannot get such a good MSA, 8.0 square millimeter. So I think even if they enrolled severe classified lesions, some patients might not have real severe classified lesions.
But also, they use a lot of rotabulation. Because if you take out, if you don't use rotabulation, you cannot use a cutting balloon effectively. So the cutting balloon got a lot of support by the rotabulation, which is okay. But, you know, to me, the message of this trial is that if you don't do, if you don't have IVL, you can still do a good job if you are a good interventionist. But if you have IVL, things are easier, more fluid, more simple.
I think from a more practical point of view, for me, for IVL is most useful when you encounter deep calcium, which cannot be usually treated well with cutting balloon or rotor. And in those cases, I think IVL really shines.
Something interesting about both trials, shortcut and Victory, is that they also included moderate calcification. I'm not sure if you need to do IVL or rotation arthrectomy for moderate calcification, at least in my practice. I mean, and if you really have true severe calcification, cutting balloon just won't cross. So I'm a little bit suspect. Despite the results of the shortcut trial, I'm not going to use cutting balloon for severe calcification to plaque modify these lesions.
And some patients were enrolled only based on the geographic findings.
Which could overestimate, and it could be medial calcification as well.
Yeah.
So I think unfortunately, time is almost up. Just a few final words regarding the structural trials. I think to me that the partner seven years is good. There's no valve deterioration, so it's a, is a very optimistic result. And the other, I like the other two in MAC because up to five, six years ago, MAC patient had no treatment options. Surgeon don't want to operate, nothing you can do. I know that these two trials had some selection bias, but at least they enrolled many patients. So this patient, five years ago, would have been without any option. So despite some enrollment selection, still, the patient that get accepted, they do okay.
Okay, Antonio, as we, right.
Thank you very much. I think it's been a long day, but.
We want to see you tomorrow.
Maybe in the future, this last session, another 10 minutes.
All right, right, right. All right, see you, see you tomorrow. Thank you for doing this.